Thank you. I guess we are returning from the closed session and we have nothing to report as far as the closed session is concerned. So we're now closing the closed session formally and going to the open session. And I think we're still waiting for Councilmember Turner. So if you give her another minute, when she gets in.
Has the recorded recording started already?
Yes.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. I was hoping the council member Turner could join us and do that, but she's not here.
Mayor, can I read the instructions first before we start the meeting?
Yeah, good idea.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening for the February 1st, 2022, Monee Srinath City Council regular meeting. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to this council member's staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Councilmembers, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear council members speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and able to speak to the council. To comment or do oral communication or on any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city client will be read into the record. The word limit is set to the typical three-minute timeline. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants coming in from the telephone will be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are all in the same room, objects at this meeting will be taken by laptop.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and Councilmember Lawler, could you go ahead and reset the start? Lead us on the pledge of allegiance, please.
Sure, happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call is next.
Councilmember Lawler.
Present.
Councilmember Luukel.
Present.
Mayor Pratap Mechaak.
Present.
Mayor Lahi.
Present.
And Councilmember Turner is not present yet. We have a call.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the orders of the day?
No changes.
Any presentations that have been made?
There are no presentations, sir.
Thank you. Any oral communications?
And no oral. There are no attendees with their hands.
No one has their hands raised. Any written communications?
And no written communications received.
Then next we have the consent calendar. And today I think all we have is a consent calendar. Anybody want to pull any of those items off the consent calendar? If not, does any member of the public wish to address us on any member, any item that's on the consent calendar? Hearing none. Does somebody want to make a motion for approval of the consent calendar? Councilmember Mechaak, I'm sorry, Mayor Pratap Mechaak has his hand up, and I think Councilmember Lawler is next. So Mayor Pratap Mechaak.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. And second?
I'll second that.
Councilmember, all right, roll call, please.
We can't hear you very well, Mr. Stavila.
Okay, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, Councilmember Luukel.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Pratap Mechaak?
I.
And Mayor Lahi?
I.
That motion passes five zero.
Thank you. All right. Then we have I guess we have to go back. Well, is there any, there's no unfinished business as I can tell. There's no new business. And there's no matter for public hearings. If I'm not correct, please let me know. All right. So then we need, we do have another closed session regarding existing litigation. So we will now adjourn to closed section and
We need to take public comment right before we adjourn.
Okay, any members of the public wish to comment on any of these action items? Or on the closed session matter, you got to litigation. Hearing none, I think we can go to closed session. And is the link for that the same as the last one or is it a different link?
I just, it is a different link. It should be on your calendar. And mayor, I did send it to you as well in your email.
Thank you so much. So we're now going back to our closed session regarding existing litigation. See you all there. Thank you.
I'm Michelle.
Hello, welcome back. Voice sounds okay? Can you hear me?
I can hear you clear.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody again. We're back from closed session. And we do have a quorum here. I don't know if you need to take votes again. A roll call again, probably not. And I see we have at least four people on, all five of us. Are present at this time. All right. Do we need to take a roll call again, Mr. Rettler?
Um, we don't have to.
Okay, so we'll go on. My report from closed session is there's nothing to report. We had a discussion and. But there's nothing to report. So the next item on the agenda is committee commission reports. Do we have some committee commission reports? Council member Luther, please go ahead.
Thanks. Just wanted to jump right in. We had our first JPA meeting of the Santa Clara County libraries. Wonderful news to report on that. They have resumed complete full service hours. So that's good news for them and for all of the citizens in the larger Santa Clara County Library District service area. Campbell is continuing with their. Instruction project and they have their satellite library available during that time period. Silicon Valley Reads has restarted for their 2022 program. So if you're interested in that. Jump on and see what the reading materials are and join in. The library passport offices are all reopened and they're offering that service. That's a major add on that they've. Created and very, very helpful for anyone who needs passport renewal to be able to do that through the libraries. And it raises a little bit of revenue for the libraries. So. Want to get that information out. That's something that perhaps the city can promote as well. So if. City can reach out and find the links and promote it to our citizens. That'd probably be a good next door promotion. The. One more piece of great news other than them passing the budget and being under excellent fiscal health for another year and looking forward five years. Is that they have just earned a position as in the top five in the nation in our category for libraries. So. Santa Clara County Library District is really a wonderful resource and wonderful team of people there doing some of the best work in the country. So. Reach out, use your library card, make sure everybody you know is using it. Lots of online programs, wonderful, wonderful resource for everybody. So that's my report.
Thank you and congratulations for doing such a good job with the library. And council member. Laura, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, as I'm just reporting on Valley Water, we had our meeting last week and. Good news, water savings call was achieved in November. So people are doing a very good job of conserving. However, we need to continue. We still have a. Risk of subsidence in 2022 if dry conditions continue and the targets aren't met. Most cities, 13 of Santa Clara, the cities in Santa Clara County have taken formal action, but the other two are doing everything they can with messaging. So that's. Equally important. And Valley Water is leveraging all tools it can to minimize rate impacts from two key drivers. Which are primarily emergency water purchases for the next two years as well as smart infrastructure. Investments. And so they're doing everything they can to keep those rates, rate increases as low as possible. But that is. What we're kind of looking at with this drought and that is all I have to report.
Thank you, Mayor Councilor Laura. Councilor Turner, please go ahead.
Uh, yes, I got a report from our neighborhood watch group as well as the Montessorino, the Los Gatos Montessorino Police Department. That yesterday afternoon at five o'clock, a female was accosted at the St. Joseph Hill Open Reserve Space. So what they're asking us to do is to make sure that when we're walking, we don't walk with earbuds on so that we can actually be aware of what's going on around. The suspect is still at large. So be careful as you're going by. He's five feet, five inch, five inches tall, 150 pounds. And he was wearing all black with a blue bandana. So that's what I have to report.
You also attended the neighborhood watch. Do you have anything to put on that one? I was there too, but I thought.
Oh, yes.
If you could report on that, that'd be nice.
So for the neighborhood watch, the, the group of 90 homes from. Twin Creeks all the way to Villa Caballero are looking at setting up their own. Cameras, one in each side and they will fund it. We're also looking at installing an NICP, which is a shed on, on the Twin Creek side. We only have one, which is in the. Dave's Avenue school side. So we're still working on that and I think it's going pretty well so far.
Yeah, I, I thought that was very impressive. These neighbors are just getting together to make sure. They protect their neighborhoods and they're actually paying up to about $400 per home. For these flock cameras and there have a whole bunch of them. So it's really impressive how neighbors, neighbors are getting together and doing it themselves.
Also, one of the things that we're doing is we're putting the WhatsApp applications for the block captains so that they can communicate with their residents. And so that's something new. I asked them to, to investigate that with Jackie Rose. And if we can get those best practices, we can work with Saratoga and Los Gatos in where their block captains to use the WhatsApp application.
Excellent. Council member, make a check, please. Mayor Protime, please go ahead.
Thanks. Well, San Jose Water Company, I report every meeting. We filed rates filed. Testimony, I filed testimony on their cost of capital proceeding on January 31st, which was Monday. And it looks like we may have some very interesting information forthcoming, which would be the audited financial statements for San Jose Water Company. They may be released by. By either the commission or San Jose Water Company. So that. I'll report back on that shortly when there's more visibility and. As well, we're currently on hold with respect to the general rate case and what, what's going to happen with the. Cost of water there. And then with respect to West Valley Solid Waste JPA. I was appointed to the ad hoc committee to work with Paul Resnikoff of Campbell, the mayor of Campbell on the hauling contract. So one part is where you. Process and, and put the waste and then the other one is the actual hauling. So. I just wanted to say that, that process is started and it will probably take. A year to work through the contract. They have to go to bid. They have to go do, follow a very formal process. And it's got to be entirely independent. So I will report on that as it develops. That's what I've got to say tonight.
Thank you. Except for me, everybody else has reported. On silicon really clean energy, I think what, there's a lot of development, a lot of funding going on. What's happening right now with the PUC is there's a NIM three project, which is. Which might hurt the solar, the people who want to put solar on their homes. The proposal the PUC almost approved was to charge an extra $50 for people who have solar homes on a monthly basis. But there's a lot of pushback against that and that's now been put on hold. But it's going to be pending for the discussion because. What they're trying to do is balance it. I mean, there's a lot of. I mean, the concern is people who are, you know, well to do, they're the ones who have solar homes. But when they build a solar panel on their houses, they're not paying for the electricity that the GNE is transmitting. And we're awarding the cost of their, the cost of those transmission lines that have to be subsidized where people were not that well off. So by. Making them pay, then it'll help. Keep the rates lower for other individuals, but that's, there's been a lot of pushback because the whole idea on clean energy is to. Get as much clean energy as possible. And one way to do it is to avoid the grid and avoid making other plans, whether they be solar or otherwise. To, to provide the energy. I mean, my, my feeling it is all these clean energy companies should really. Go out of business. The goal should be to go out of business. The goal should be every home, every commercial enterprise can generate enough electricity to keep itself going. So there's no transmission and there's no. Further problems that, that generation creates, but I don't think that's going to happen because once you go into business, you want to make sure you stay in business. But that's what's happening in the clean energy area. See, any other person have any other committee or committee reports? Uh, yeah, council member Luther, please go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, you brought up Silicon Valley Clean Energy. I had seen on Nextdoor, I believe, the link to the Los Gatos Library. Saying that you can check out various Silicon Valley Clean Energy sponsored materials from the library. Some of which are yours to keep and some of which are things like the infrared thermometer and such for testing for energy leaks around your home. I saw that promoted, but I was wondering if that's something that either through Silicon Valley Clean Energy or through the city of Monte Sereno. We can promote to our citizens. It looked like there had been 16 checkouts last year in all of last year. We can probably do better than that with just our council members and city staff if we were to check out from our Los Gatos Library. On that. So that's something we may want to promote more and follow up on.
That's an excellent suggestion. I, I assume Ms. Rettler has been taking down all these notes on things that we need to promote. She's done a good job of posting things on Nextdoor. I, if she's the one who's doing that, or if those are being posted by somebody else at the staff. All right.
It would be great. Council member Luther, if you could send some information to the city clerk to let the council members know about that because. I think I understand what it is and that would be most interesting to take a look at.
Excellent. Any other committee commission reports? If not, we'll go to council member comments. And council member Turner, please go ahead.
Uh, yeah, this is, this is actually a leftover of the previous committee commission report. I did receive. Uh, yeah, this is, this is actually a leftover of the previous committee commission report. I did receive. Notification, the West Valley Sanitation District that somebody broke into their equipment in the back. In the back of the building and they did not bother anything. They took the cameras, two cameras that was worth a hundred thousand dollars and left. So.
Are those the security cameras that they took or something else?
No, it's, it's, it's the cameras that, that they use for looking down at the sewer. So they actually knew what they were picking up. They were worth a hundred thousand dollars apiece.
And council member Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you. I was just going to follow up with. Councilmember Turner's remarks about the attacks that happened on the Jones Trail and just wanted to remind residents that those attacks happened in the early evening and. Or consequently in the dark and to always, always. Be very, very mindful of being on trails in the evening. I know they close at dusk. And you should always at best have a companion with you. So just to be, stay safe.
I think it's an excellent reminder and. We all need to do what we can and unfortunately. It's, it's getting worse out there in these little incidences. Councilmember Turner, did you still have your hands up?
Oh, yeah. So late last week, something happened in Saratoga. There's a community in Saratoga called Parker Ranch and Parker Ranch, they have their own security patrol. So what happened was two people came in. They stole some things from a neighbor's house. The security people saw them. They reported it to police. The police caught the suspects. They went to the DA and got released. So nothing happened. Because the, the. The amount was less than six hundred dollars. So they were, they were released.
There's a DA election coming up, so. The DA would make a bigger deal about it, but who knows? And sometimes.
That's Prop forty seven, by the way.
Okay. All right. Any other council member comments? If not, we'll go to our city manager for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things this evening I want to bring to council's attention. One is our annual strategic goals, tentatively set for March twenty second. Which would be a special meeting, but I think it's probably a good idea to schedule that special meeting just to focus on the strategic goals. And not include it with other matters of council business. It will be on a Tuesday night. And the consultant Sean Spano is available. We are trying to get it done early this year before the budget cycle. The last couple of years because of the pandemic have pushed it out. To basically into the budget cycle where if really this is the first step in the budget process so we can establish what the council goals are so we can budget to achieve those goals. Therefore, it is important to have it on, you know, in March if possible, and March twenty second is a tentative date. And, you know, please email at me if you have a conflict that evening and we can try to. Try to work something else out, but I'm, I'm hoping it's available for, for all council members. And the other item I want to report on this evening is. An update on our housing element. And here is where we currently are. Staff has been working with EMC planning, the consultant on the updated element. We are. Reviewing the status of programs from the current housing element, identifying potential sites for possible consideration of increased density and planning public outreach. We have a website which is www-athomeinmontessorino.org. And it went live a couple of weeks ago. We have had thirty five visitors. The site. Each week. So over the course of two, three weeks, thirty five visitors. A week, which is pretty good volume for us. Postcards were also mailed to all residences. You've probably received those in the mail informing them of the project and the website so they can participate. We also have a joint study session with the Site and Architectural Commission on Thursday, February twenty fourth. Where the consultant will be in attendance and they are going to provide a complete overview of the project, the public outreach plans and seek direction. On the next steps. So that is my report this evening. Available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
You're on mute, Mayor Elahy.
Thank you. Yeah, this, this, the California Superior Court, I think, has gone live. They're going to be. Offering full time hours now and things seem to be. Moving back to pre pandemic levels and I guess maybe if you can give us a report, I don't know if you're ready for that yet or not on. Where we are on our city or our meetings at least going live and so we can meet person to person. If you have all the equipment and plexiglass or whatever else we need. Mr. Linares, if you have any comments or thoughts on that. Are you still there, Mr. Harris? So maybe.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mayor. I was on mute. So I, I have been relying on the governor's direction, whatever the executive orders coming out of Sacramento have been throughout this pandemic and that has served Montessorino well. We are eager to get back to live meetings as soon as. You know, the governor says it's okay and they, they reinstate the Brown Act the way we had it before. We, whether we're going to be masked or have plexiglass or, or any of those things. I'm not really certain if that will be part of, you know, the future guidelines for the next executive order. But we are really ready to go back live. I mean, we have a new camera system installed almost two years ago. Haven't been able to use it. Eager to use it, eager to see you all in person, eager to be in the council chambers, eager to bring the public back in, but at the same time. We're just looking for direction from the governor and of course, in the interest of the public health and public safety. So that's how I am taking my cues. From the staff perspective. Throughout this pandemic.
That's good to hear. I just want to make sure we're ready to go as soon as things turn around and the governor says it's okay or the county itself says it's okay. Because I think it'd be good to get back to live meetings. Any other matter you want to comment on, city manager?
That's all. Unless you have other questions.
Uh, council member, sorry, Mayor Protime, make a check as, please go ahead.
I was just going to make a comment that. I met with a contractor yesterday and he had explained to me that he contracted COVID. A month ago and as well, my daughter who lives in New York City. She got COVID and fortunately, oh, and then I spoke with another person and her daughter is a nurse in San Diego. And there's all kinds of people that are going into the ICU in San Diego. But they're generally unvaccinated, unvaccinated or they have existing health conditions. It was troubling with my daughter. She's double vaxxed, boosted. And, you know, she got COVID and is in isolation for another couple of days, but fortunately she's feeling okay. But it's still out there and so long as everyone's double vaxxed and boosted, I think the. I haven't heard of anyone getting really, really sick, but we do have to keep her. It, it is still dangerous out there. So I would, I would really look forward to getting back into council chambers.
Right, yeah, I think that's, that's the current status. Prediction is it's supposed to go down, but let's see how those predictions hold down. All right. Any, I think that's the end of the city manager's report, future agenda items. Any particular agenda item? Anyone you would like to see on the next few council meetings? My A bag is, the housing element is going to be an important item. And. What other, any particular other items you want to see on there? Okay, city manager, probably you've got some thoughts on what I don't, we would be looking at in the next few weeks, next few months.
Certainly, we have a suicide prevention resolution coming up at our next meeting. And let's see, I did receive an email from the clerk this evening with our schedule, so I can pull that up and. Take a look, we have. The annual picnic coming forward at our next meeting. Community grants are coming forward for February fifteenth. Appointment of Better Streets Commissioners coming forward and we also have, I reached out to San Jose Water as well as Valley Water for presentation. Perhaps on the fifteenth of February, perhaps an item on annexation if that can be completed by staff in time. So we have quite a full agenda for February fifteenth coming.
I appreciate you giving us a heads up on it. Thank you. Also, I think we had some discussion on. Maybe changing some of the rules on the youth commission for who get elected next time around. I don't know if council member Lawler and. I guess Councilor Lawler and I are on the ad hoc committee. We haven't really, we've talked about it briefly, but that may be something that council member Lawler can. Discuss with you and maybe put it on the agenda to see how that can be changed. All right, without getting into discussions for all these reasons, because it's not been agendized. Any other future agenda item? All right, so the finance committee report, Brian, did you want to give them a finance committee report? This to our meetings?
I'll, I'll do that at the next council meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Yeah, it'd be great. I thank you all for your commission reports. I think that's very, very helpful. Also, the ad hoc committees, if they have done anything or whatever, at some meetings like council member Turner reported on. Her meeting on the Barista Commission, that would be good to, for everybody else to. Learn about it and see how we can contribute on any of those items. Anything else, sir? I guess the. I guess we can now adjourn. So thank you, thank you all very much. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Take care.
Bye.
Good evening.
Good evening. Bye bye.